Buenas, el comité se ha retirado de la represión y estamos aquí para testificar sobre la resolución 93-37 COR, relativa a la unión al Comunismo del Norte de Marianas, al público de Balaú y otras naciones del Pacífico, y a la obligación del gobierno de Japón de considerar alternativas a la descarga de más de 1 millón de toneladas de agua contaminada proveniente del desastre nuclear de Fukushima y Daiichi en el océano Pacífico. Así que, en el momento en que esta resolución fue escrita, el gobierno de Japón todavía estaba en los estadios de planificación de su plan de disporción de más de 1,2 millones de toneladas de agua contaminada proveniente del desastre nuclear de Fukushima y Daiichi en el océano Pacífico. Desde este pasado agosto, la compañía en cargo de Fukushima, o empresa eléctrica de Tokio, TEPCO, ha comenzado a descargear el agua en el océano Pacífico. Durante los próximos 17 días o así, TEPCO releasing about 7,800 toneladas de agua tratada y continuará con la disposición de la agua de basura durante un plazo estimado de 30 a 40 años. Aunque el gobierno de Japón nota que la descarga de agua tratada en el océano es una práctica estándar de las plantas de energía nuclear, la cantidad de agua de basura presente en Fukushima es sin precedentes, y no hay manera de estar seguro de los tipos de efectos adversos que ocurrirán 30 años en el futuro. Y una vez haya un daño al océano, cadena alimentaria o a la gente, ha ocurrido, no se puede fácilmente rectificar. No con dinero, no con disculpas. Enviando a Japón a descargear más de 1,2 a 1,3 millones de toneladas de agua de basura en nuestros océanos compartidos sin abordar las verdaderas preocupaciones de otras naciones dentro de la región establece un peligro para el futuro, especialmente ahora que las intensas consecuencias del cambio climático están aumentando. El Pacífico es especialmente vulnerable a estas consecuencias y es inconsciente para generar más riesgos. Nuestra gente en el Pacífico se sostenía ante las pesadas y perjudiciales cargas de pruebas nucleares. Hoy esperamos a承担 el costo de los errores de las industrias de energía nuclear a la costa de nuestros economías, seguridad, medioambiente y salud. El Pacífico tiene altos ratios de cáncer y otras enfermedades. El senador Joshua Tenorio presentó la siguiente declaración: "Las naciones y territorios islas del Pacífico deben unirse para mantener a la gobierno japonés responsable por cualquier consecuencia que resulte de su liberación de sistemas de procesamiento avanzado de agua tratada de la planta de energía nuclear de Fukushima en el océano Pacífico". Así que ahora, en este momento, me gustaría reconocer a aquellos que se han inscrito para testificar. El primero en su lista es Moneca Flores.
Sisuzmasi, senadora Perez, y gracias a usted y a los senadores que están presentes aquí esta mañana para escuchar sobre estas importantes políticas nucleares, y gracias mucho por presentarlas. Es hora de que Guam se una a las demandas de las comunidades internacionales para proteger nuestros océanos para nuestro futuro, para el futuro de todas las generaciones. Es realmente importante tomar un look en esta decisión, la decisión del gobierno japonés de, la decisión del gobierno de Japón de liberar esta agua. La decisión ignora la evidencia científica, viola nuestros derechos humanos y nuestros derechos indígenas como comunidades del Pacífico, y también no cumple con la ley marítima internacional. Específicamente, Japón está en violación de sus obligaciones que ha comprometido, como definido bajo la Ley Ambiental Internacional, la Convención de las Naciones Unidas sobre la Ley del Mar. Lo más importante, esta decisión ignora las voces de la gente del Pacífico. La descarga de materiales radioactivos en el ambiente marino de la planta nuclear de Fukushima inevitablemente aumentará nuestra exposición a nuestra gente y a todas las especies marinas durante varios años, con el mismo nivel de exposición dependiendo de múltiples variables, variables que todavía estamos tratando de entender. Las concentraciones en biota son directamente relevantes para aquellos que las consumen, todos nosotros en el Pacífico y el resto del mundo que come esta vida marina. Esta contaminación crecerá, acumulará bio en los peces con el tiempo. Estoy profundamente decepcionada y indignada, y sé que comparto este tristeza, decepción y indignación con muchas personas en Guam, en el Pacífico y en todo el mundo. Este tristeza, decepción y indignación por la decisión del gobierno de Japón de liberar el agua a pesar de nuestras preocupaciones. Y los volúmenes aumentantes y la liberación de agua radioactiva demuestran el fallo del plan de decomisionamiento para la planta de energía nuclear de Fukushima. La agua contaminada continuará acumulándose durante muchos años sin medidas efectivas para detenerla. El gobierno japonés y TEPCO falsamente afirman que la descarga es la única opción viable necesaria para la eventual decomisionamiento. La generación de energía nuclear, que experimenta destrucción debido a accidentes y desastres naturales, y que perpetuamente requiere energía térmica como backup, no puede resolverse como solución al calentamiento global. La contaminación deliberada del océano Pacífico a través de estos descargos de basura radioactiva es consecuencia de este desastre. Y en lugar de reconocer los defectos del plan de decomisionamiento actual, la crise nuclear continua y la cantidad enorme de dinero requerido para manejar esta crisis, el gobierno en cambio intenta reestablecer más reactores nucleares a pesar de evidencias de grandes terremotos y riesgos de seguridad. El plan de energía del gobierno falla en proveer de renovables seguros y sostenibles y también pone al resto del Pacífico en peligro. También la Agencia de Energía Atómica Internacional, que ha agradecido el plan de Japón para la descarga, falló en investigar la operación del sistema de procesamiento avanzado de agua. Esta tecnología ha procesado alrededor del 70% de la agua y tendrá que ser procesada de nuevo. Los científicos han advertido que los riesgos radiológicos de las descargas no han sido abordados completamente, y los impactos biológicos de tritium, carbon 14, strontium 90 y iodine 129 han sido ignorados. Así que todas estas preocupaciones de estos materiales radioactivos han sido ignoradas. Además, las plantas de descarga han fracasado en realizar una evaluación de impacto ambiental comprensiva, como se requiere por las obligaciones legales internacionales, dada que hay un riesgo significativo de daño trans界的 a todos los países vecinos en el Pacífico. La Agencia de Energía Atómica Internacional no está contratada para proteger el marino global, pero debería, pero debería, y debería también no animar a Japón a violarlo. Sabes, realmente agradecemos al senador y colegas por presentar esta medida importante, y no es una medida que simplemente es ideológica. Preocuparse por la contaminación nuclear no es algo que simplemente es ideológico. Hay verdaderos riesgos y peligros que aún no tenemos una comprensión completa, y hay un historial largo de este tipo de contaminación perjudicial en el mundo. No es ideológico exigir que, sabes, exigir mejor para nuestra gente, para la seguridad genuina, para la protección de nuestros océanos, para la protección de nuestros peces y la protección de todos nuestros recursos costales y de nuestra gente. Este, sí, esto es solo algo que va, que es tan necesario. Así que muchas gracias, senadora, por esta resolución, y nos levantamos en apoyo de esta resolución. Sisuzmasi.
Sisuzmasi, Moneca, por su testimonio. Ahora me gustaría llamar al consulado general, o viceconsulado general Osama Ogata. Gracias por estar.
Gracias. En primer lugar, me gustaría agradecer al senador Sabin Perez por proporcionarme esta oportunidad. Y hoy, poco antes de cuando registré, había un colón en favor o en contra. Por supuesto, soy diplomático, no puedo tomar una posición ni tampoco, así que no revisé, pero la, así que esta oportunidad es muy importante para nosotros, la explicación sobre el asunto. Muchas gracias. Y porque he estado en Guam durante aproximadamente siete años y medio, diría que soy casi un japonés chamorro. Sin embargo, hoy me gustaría hacer una explicación a cargo del gobierno japonés. Sí, perdón. Sobre la descarga de agua alpiana. Pasando directo al punto. Creo que el ser humano piensa y actúa basado en ambas emociones y razones. En primer lugar, hablo basándome en mis razones. Primero, el gobierno japonés ha sido transparente desde el principio. A abril de 2021, el plan de descarga de agua alpiana fue anunciado. El 21 de agosto de 2023, el gobierno japonés decidió la fecha de descarga. El 24 de agosto de 2023, la descarga comenzó. Mientras tanto, el gobierno japonés siguió proporcionando información científica a la corporación diplomática en Tokio, llevando consultas bilaterales con países del Pacífico, incluidos el PIF. El consulado también ha sido transparente desde el principio y desde abril de 2021 ha tomado cada oportunidad para explicar sobre este asunto al gobierno de Guam, a los senadores y a los mayors. El consulado general Rumiko Ishigami y yo estaríamos agradecidos si nos dieran la oportunidad de proporcionar a cada uno de ustedes una explicación mucho más detallada en cualquier momento sobre el asunto antes de que la legislatura tome la decisión oficial relacionada con la propuesta de resolución. Y segundo, en segundo lugar, he proporcionado los documentos de testimonio. Llevo cuidadosamente a leer todos los documentos. La primera página es agua alpiana, y lo que es agua alpiana se explica. Y la vinculación uno, como una vinculación uno, lo que es tritio se explica. Y como una vinculación dos, referencia a la cantidad anual de descarga de tritio en todo el mundo, lo que significa que todas las plantas nucleares en el mundo descargan el tritio. Y la vinculación, como una vinculación tres, resumen ejecutivo de IAEA. Y finalmente, como una vinculación tres, el Consejo de Mayors de Guam adoptó una resolución el año pasado en diciembre contra el plan de descarga de agua alpiana. Y un mes después, en enero, lo recogieron. Esta es, esta es una copia de ello. Así que lee cuidadosamente. Usted, usted entenderá, usted, usted tendrá mucha más comprensión sobre cómo la agua alpiana es científicamente segura. Las explicaciones sobre estas cosas están todas, todas más basadas en mis razones. Ahora me gustaría decirles esto, este problema basado en mis emociones. Como pueden saber, Japón es el único país en el mundo en el que no solo uno, sino dos armas nucleares fueron disparadas, en tanto Hiroshima y Nagasaki. Esto implica que los ciudadanos japoneses, incluyéndome yo mismo, son todos sensibles a los problemas nucleares. Personalmente tengo preocupaciones y preocupaciones sobre la agua alpiana, emocionalmente como ustedes. Conociendo las preocupaciones y las emociones de la gente, sin embargo, el gobierno de Japón ha tomado cada paso para asegurarse de que el método de agua alpiana eliminaría las sustancias radioactivas perjudiciales y no contaminaría el medioambiente. Además, la descarga está continuamente monitoreada junto con los expertos de IAEA en el sitio. Todos compartimos el mismo océano Pacífico, y Japón no puede sobrevivir sin agua limpia. Puedo asegurarles que la descarga es segura. Si por monitoreo el nivel de seguridad no está garantizado, la descarga será discontinua. Pero hasta ahora, la seguridad está garantizada.
Sisuzmasi. Sisuzmasi, viceconsulado general. Así que preguntaremos más tarde, pero solo vamos a que todos provean testimonio, aquellos que vinieron aquí para testificar. ¿Hay alguien más que quisiera venir a la mesa? ¿Alguien más? Si puede venir a la mesa, sí, veo a usted, señor McNich. Sí, por favor, venga a la mesa para que sepamos quién va a testificar, y asegúrese de inscribirse antes de hacerlo. Bien, señor McNich, usted es reconocido.
Gracias, senadora Perez, y ciertamente gracias, senadores, por estar aquí con nosotros hoy. También gracias al viceconsulado general Ogata y el señor Tenorio del oficio de Japón, así como nuestros otros invitados discutiendo aquí hoy. En esta parte del escenario, básicamente soy, este es un tipo de, estoy usando mi sombrero de la Universidad de Guam. Usamos la estudio de Fukushima como un caso activo de gestión de emergencias, y fue un terremoto, un tsunami, así como el accidente de reactor nuclear secundario. Tengo que decir, los primeros respondientes y los bomberos que, bajo gran sacrificio, abordaron esa tragedia, mi corazón se le va al corazón al gobierno de Japón y a la gente de Japón. Fue una hora de servicio alto y honor para ellos responder a ese accidente. En términos de la cuestión de agua que se encuentra hoy, y, ¿puedo preguntar, madame, madame presidenta? ¿Hay un tipo de ambiente de protocolo en términos de estos escenarios? ¿Hay un exército de armas que mantiene el orden y mantiene el derecho de que los oradores discuten?
Bueno, le damos toda la oportunidad, así que, quiero decir, ¿tienes esta oportunidad de hablar sobre la resolución ahora?
Gracias, madame, y lo hago. Y solo quiero mencionar que para nuestros invitados y también para mí mismo, soy un invitado asignado para hablar con el organismo legislativo, y Cinder Brown es nuestra senadora más senior, y en mi experiencia trabajando con su lado del asiento, siempre han mantenido decoración. Simplemente rude mantener signos detrás de los invitados cuando están dando presentaciones porque el mensaje es de la persona que está hablando, y eso es solo mi punto general de consideración bajo mi capacidad de petición a este organismo para tratar a los invitados adecuadamente, porque no creo que nuestros invitados previamente se trataron adecuadamente. No me molesta, soy un científico político, todo va bien, pero refleja el nivel de respeto que la gente da al organismo, y creo que el organismo debe otorgar un alto respeto a estas preguntas, y no creo que los signos fueran adecuados detrás de la persona que está hablando.
¿Está hablando sobre la resolución o por sí mismo?
Sí, lo hago.
Lo siento, sí, sí. Si puede confinarlo a la resolución misma.
Gracias, madame. Y así, en general, en términos de la cuestión de Fukushima, la planta de energía fue construida en 1967. Japón ha estado trabajando transparentemente y abiertamente con la comunidad internacional y con Guam en estas preguntas. Han comunicado muy activamente sobre ello. Este escenario, o este proceso, y me disculpo por decir escenario, pero este proceso tiene un sentido ideológico, eso es lo que son los signos, y no creo que los enfoques ideológicos sean muy buenos para los esfuerzos diplomáticos en términos de tratar de tener un mensaje para la comunidad internacional, y quiero decir eso usando mi sombrero en el, en el lado diplomático. Creo que necesitamos actuar más adecuadamente. Y así, creo que ese es el contexto de mi entrada hoy, y me gustaría animar a los senadores a trabajar con nuestros oficiales japoneses presentes y con el gobierno de Japón, y expresar efectivamente las preocupaciones que nuestro gobierno tiene, pero no necesariamente creo que la resolución, como la leí hoy antes, refleja eso. Muchas gracias.
Bien, sí, gracias por su testimonio. Creo que en cuanto a los signos, creo que es apropiado porque estamos hablando de energía nuclear, y así, sí, podemos discutir esto en otro momento para poder ajustarnos.
Gracias, gracias de nuevo.
Perdón, señor Menno, perdón, no te he reconocido todavía. Así que solo voy por la lista y veo quién es, quién es siguiente. Así que ahora, ¿hay una nueva, perdón? Solo voy por la lista. Casey Bridalio, Alejandra Sablon, José Napati, y esto es, parece María, María, Angela Santos, Tori Manley, Serena Paulino. Bien, Serena Paulino, usted es reconocido.
San Hafaday. No vine aquí con ningún tipo de discurso preparado. Ni siquiera planeaba decir nada hoy, pero gracias por darme la oportunidad de decir algo como madre. Sabes, no, no heredamos la tierra de nuestros ancestros, la prestamos a nuestros hijos y solo con todos los "si" y, y, no, estoy en favor de este proyecto y la resolución. Necesitamos proteger nuestra isla, nuestra gente, nuestros hijos, y con todo lo que pasó con Fukushima y su evento desafortunado, podemos estar adelante con eso al poner este proyecto en place y, y solo haciendo lo correcto, siendo del lado correcto de la historia. Así que le pido, sabes, le pido a ustedes, como nuestros líderes, para proteger a nuestra gente, proteger y defender a nuestra gente y nuestra tierra y todo lo que es, todo lo que mantenemos sagrado aquí. Sisuzmasi.
Sisuzmasi, muchas gracias por su testimonio. Malaya Crowder, usted es reconocida.
Gracias. Mi nombre es Malaya. Estoy aquí con mis cuatro hijos. Y un martes a las 9:00 AM, normalmente hacen algo de matemáticas, o estudios sociales, o ciencia, o historia, porque tradicionalmente, idealmente, así es como se asegura su futuro. Pero cuando algo como esto sucede, donde tiene que haber un proyecto para proteger su hogar, o su agua, su vida, la tierra natural alrededor de usted, de repente, la matemática y la historia y los estudios sociales no son tan importantes más porque esto es más inmediato. Mis hijos no están en la escuela hoy, están manteniendo signos detrás de mí y quieren ustedes, quieren la gente de Guam para preservar su futuro, preservar el futuro de sus bebés, todos los futuros de nuestros bebés. Lo merecen. Y para salir de lo que usted dijo, no necesitamos pedirles. Es nuestro trabajo como madres y padres y padres para protegerlos. Así que son decisiones como estas las que nos pueden inconveniente en el momento. Para protegerlos es absolutamente necesario. Digo esto con gratitud por este proyecto, digo esto con compasión en mi corazón, entiendo cómo, cómo esto funciona, pero por favor vea en los aspectos reales de los niños, en los futuros reales que tienen y piense en ellos en su línea de tiempo en lugar de solo nuestros. Eso es todo.
Muchas gracias, Malaya, gracias. Y para sus hijos. Así que en este momento, nos, solo me moveré por la fila. Perdón, creo que quería ir a la última, ¿verdad? Bien, así que señor Ben, Ben Menno.
Gracias de nuevo. Solo quería apreciar a ustedes, senadores aquí. Me gustaría darles un poco de la mente, la palabra de sabiduría. Japón, madame presidenta, en 1941, vinieron con el avión, el barco y la pistola. Soy uno de ellos. Todavía vivo, soy un sobreviviente de guerra. Venieron con todas estas cosas y, sí, los perdonamos, los perdoné porque soy cristiano católico, creo en eso. Mis padres me enseñaron a perdonar, Jesús murió en la cruz y lo acepté, perdoqué a la gente de Japón, pero eso es una guerra. Ahora, lo que veo ahora es que no tienen ninguna pistola, pero es líquida. Lo que estoy tratando de señalar, madame presidenta, es que debemos aprender una lección de Maduro cuando Estados Unidos probó el bomba atómica en esa pequeña isla. Hasta ese tiempo, están siendo compensados debido a la destrucción de no solo gente, sino de toda la área. Cuando estaba allí, conocí a personas, niños que no parecen ser humanos, y todavía reciben miles de dólares, ¡ah, enhorabuena!, miles de dólares, pero se ven de forma. Tenemos que entender que cuando contaminas el agua, comemos la arena, comemos el octavo, comemos la pescadilla, nadamos en el agua. Madame presidenta, tengo mi completa confianza en ustedes, senadores, que debemos luchar y oponernos a esto. Debilita contra eti, debilita contra iha punesh. Tenemos que ir en contra de esto, y sé que entienden lo que estoy diciendo, madame presidenta. No podemos permitir que esto suceda. Fuimos, fui a la guerra y sufrií tremendamente debido a la atrocidad. No quiero ver esto de nuevo salir del gobierno japonés. Por favor, hubegei ngukoku gizamdu, nosotros votamos por usted, la gente de Guam votó por usted, confió en usted, para liderarlos, para protegerlos, para salvarlos y para hacer las cosas mejores para ahora y la generación futura que viene. Por favor, adai, protei, guiza, chogi, na siguru na dinanti hinasomu. Esa es la palabra de sabiduría que voy a dar a usted, madame presidenta. Sisuzmasi, muchas gracias.
Sisuzmasi, señor Menno, gracias por sus palabras muy fuertes y testimonio. Ahora me gustaría reconocer a María Hernández.
Buenas, San Hafaday. Sisuzmasi, senadores honorables, por llevar este importante escenario. Estoy aquí hoy representando Kita Latexin. Somos una coalición... We are a coalition of Vertidian families coming together and raising awareness about impacts to our land, both environmental and cultural issues, and fighting for the return of our land. And I'm also a member of Macaronesia Climate Change Alliance. And it's always hard to come to these sort of things with, when you have young children, but I wanted to come out and, just for the record, so it's on legislative record, that, you know, we as a community, many of us do oppose the dumping of nuclear wastewater in our oceans. I feel like when you read national news on this issue, you know, they interview, you know, South Korea, China, and other nations about, you know, their response to the dumping of the wastewater, and we're kind of a footnote. We are always caught in the crosshairs. We just seem to be, you know, living and kind of in this position where we're just stuck in the middle. We don't have, we don't consent to any of this. Where were we in the discussions about whether we would approve or disapprove nuclear dumping in our waters? And just speaking as a mother, last year, I had the opportunity to speak with a lot of different residents about the impacts of contamination to their families. And there are many, many families in Guam who, who, you know, have had their brothers, sisters, mothers, fathers die of the same type of cancer. And many doctors discussing how this is indicative that there's an environmental component, and it's not hereditary. And so, just as a mother now, you know, as a Chamorro mother, bringing my kids around the island, deciding where to swim, where we can eat our fish from, you know? I go to the store and I see fish at the supermarket. I'm like, can I buy this fish to feed my children? And, you know, just attending a recent, the Coast Guard released results about PCB contamination, DDT contamination, and Mole Sue. And I'm learning that Latexin is seeing some of the same sort of, the same sort of results in their fish tissue sampling. Just the extent that our people are suffering already, it would just not make any sense to move forward with any projects that have the potential to continue to harm our oceans, harm our land, harm our people. And so, yeah, I didn't come with any sort of prepared speech. I just wanted to speak as a mother who's concerned about the food that I can, the fish that I can feed my children, what waters they can swim in. And these are issues that we're going to be seeing for generations to come if we don't do what we can to stop any sort of contamination from. I mean, I know, I know Japan actually already did its first release of the nuclear water, nuclear wastewater, I believe, late last month. So that's troubling. But I feel like if there's a, if there's a nation that has more of a political, that has more of a seat at the table to kind of make an impact, I feel like our colonial status really limits us in what we can do as an island nation. But if there's another nation that has, you know, more political power to put a stop to this, then we need to do what we can as a community moving forward to align with those nations that have more political power. And I feel like one release is enough, and we can't let any more water, wastewater be released in the future. So sidoz masu.
All right, thank you so much, Maria. Lastly, we have Mr. Celestial to provide his testimony.
Thank you, Chairwoman Sabina Paris and Honorable Senators. Wonderful testimonies I'm hearing today, Ambassador from Japan. My name is Robert "Namolik" Celestial. I'm retired from the US Army, most of an atomic veteran. On The Island Times, I was interviewed and my request is that our government places monitoring systems that are available out here in our oceans and our land to monitor what can, and if, just to protect the people of Guam. Monitoring systems were always around from the 40s and 50s and 60s during the nuclear testings, and they detect radiation. And what they released over in Fukushima actually is wastewater, which produces tritium, and tritium also can cause cancer. So that's my recommendation, is that our government provides the protection for the people on the island is monitoring systems. So I hope and pray that they do find the funding and have EPA have it monitored quarterly or monthly or yearly, and then report it to the legislature, that what's their findings. And also that monitoring the fish, you could always, you know, the fish that they catch for consumptions needs to be monitored and see, you know, what they're, if they have been affected by this release from Fukushima. There is scientific data, there's a lot of scientific data, and some of them opposes the other scientific data, so. And also, there are classified data. So we have to be honest to our public that even though they say that this scientific data produces this and doesn't produce that, there's also classified data that they don't release. And I know for a fact, because I've experienced it. And I just want to address one thing, too. We don't need a lesson in respect. We are Chamoros. Man samori, man gof respetu na zamoru, to come into my island and tell me that we don't have respect. Ko haadjo, you know? Utugona mestro gi ulogi yojilo, zamun sosanen na tai respetu, zani tautauta gi nigi si, gi sin tati. Zamun, zatano ustii, panongi. Very rare, I get emotional. But when it comes to my people, don't ever do that. Also, was mentioned about the fish. Even I go to the stores and wonder if I'm going to eat that fish. We have a First Amendment right, and that's what we're doing here in the legislature. People should know we have a First Amendment right to express ourselves. You can't dominate what we say and what we do. And we're talking about Fukushima, not on other issues. So don't give me a lesson on respect. Transparency. Everybody talks about transparency, but there's so much propaganda. What is transparency? You go on the news nowadays, you don't know what's news or fake news. So don't talk about transparency. We have to find out ourselves. And transparency is that our people are dying with cancer and other diseases that can't even be recognized. I have a lot of my members right now in the states that are suffering from cancer, going through treatments, and the doctors there are saying, this is a rare cancer. It only happens when your parents have been affected by nuclear ionizing radiation. Because what it did, it destroyed the DNA, and it transfers down to the children and their grandchildren. And these are the reports I'm getting from my members there in Texas, in South Carolina, and California, is that my members are going through treatment right now. And so, it is personal, that what they're going to do and what we need to do here, if we need to protect our people, we need monitoring systems. It's already been done. The water's already been released. Now it's our responsibility as a people is to protect ourselves by monitoring systems. And if they do find it, then it's up to this legislature and our government to do what's right. I can't, I don't know what the future holds, but if these monitoring systems find out that there is radioactive contamination in our fish and in our waters, then it's the responsibility of our government to address it. So that's where I stand. Sidoz masu.
Sidoz masu, Mr. Celestial. Yeah, so, you know, a lot of the problems are, you know, nobody's saying that this wasn't a surprise, right? I know the government of Japan was working with the international bodies to get the approval. But the problem is that, I think, there are many reports that there was this lack of transparency as far as, you know, what is safe, you know, as far as the testing and what is being put out there. And so, coming from our histories, our histories as Pacific Islanders, we've been subjected to nuclear contamination over the decades. And so, this is a huge, huge breach, huge breach to our environment. And, you know, we, you know, I think it's our duty as the stewards of the Pacific Islands to speak out against this. Just to, you know, I would just want to bring to light, okay, so as far as some of the UN reports. So according to what is safe, so I think this question of what is safe is really, you know, contested, you know? How can tritium, you know, we know it's radioactive, how can that be considered safe? Right? There are concerns regarding TEPCO's accuracy and credibility in their studies. According to UN experts, scientists, and other entities, TEPCO continues to allegedly misrepresent and selectively ignore basic scientific evidence on radioactive tritium. In particular, the role of organically bound tritium, or OBT, has not been adequately explained, and consequently, scientific data on the potential impacts of any future releases of contaminated water are not provided. In addition, current human dose models used by the International Atomic Energy Agency, the Japanese authorities, and TEPCO are based on single discharges, but when multiple discharges occur, the levels of OBT build up gradually. Concerning the grave impact of nuclear contamination on children's health, the 20 MSV per year permissible dose set by the Japanese government is the same maximum allowable annual dose recommended by the International Commission on Radiological Protection for Adult Nuclear Workers, which is now in, which now in Japan is being applied to men, women, children, and infants alike. This blanket determination fails to recognize the established fact that children are more sensitive to the radiation and more likely to develop the short term and some of the long-term effects of radiation exposures, given the physical size of children. As of June 15, 2020, 195 children and young people in Fukushima have been diagnosed with thyroid cancers and undergone medical interventions, with scientific evidence suggesting that radiation exposure resulting from Fukushima Daiichi accident is directly linked to these higher incidences of thyroid cancer. Despite this, the Japanese government has denied any association between radiation exposure resulting from the accident and the higher levels of thyroid cancer. This denial of scientifically proven relationship between the nuclear accident and high rates of thyroid cancer, particularly among the studied population of children and young people, raised particular concern. Regarding the public consultation and access to information from UN experts' communication to Japan in 2021, according to various testimonies and sources of information, the lack of consultation and participation of the concerned population and the general public continues to prevail. The absence of substantive exchange of information on issues of extreme importance to the lives of the affected populations, the opacity and lack of transparency of information provided to the public, the uncertainty over their health and future, and most importantly, over the future and health of their children, the prospects of return to contaminated areas of internally displaced persons are all factors which result in immense pressure over a population already facing a myriad of grave problems. The situation poses serious safety risks conditioned by radiation exposure. The consequences of the management of contaminated water at the Fukushima Daiichi nuclear plant negatively affect the environment of the affected areas, as well as the communities close but also far beyond Fukushima Prefecture by violating their right to life, to the highest attainable standard of health, as well as their right to water, and also traditional food on which large numbers of the population depend. We believe an eventual decision to discharge contaminated water reserves into the Pacific Ocean would not solve the problem that lies at the core of this unique environment challenge, especially considering the gradual potential increase of contamination, contaminated water and the source of contamination being the molten fuel cores in reactors 1 and 1, 3. According, 1, 2, 3. According, an additional point of concern is the apparent hesitation of the Japanese authorities to provide access to adequate information to the public and the opacity surrounding the nature of the hazards posed by the contaminated water and the impact of its disposal. Serious preoccupations concern the lack of effective participation of local communities and civil society organizations and meaningful consultations on the avenue of disposal of the ALPS-treated water, undermining their right to meaningful participation, as well as a lack of effective remedies. So given that many people are expressing their concerns over the children, and I think this point is very important, how Japan has determined their permissible dose of exposure is a recommendation of adult nuclear workers being blanketed for children and infants? And how is this a recommendation? So, you know, this points to our concerns, so the concerns that the people of Japan have expressed are also our concerns. And I, especially with the lack of transparency regarding the safeness of this. So at this time, I would like to open the floor to my colleagues. Senator Brown, if you have any comments or questions?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm sure I don't. Again, I appreciate all the testimony that's been provided today, and I understand the challenges. I mean, this is something, like I said, our history and what it has brought us to. It's hard to believe on a nice sunny day like this that we've had these challenges in our environment, but the reality is they are, I mean, it's our past history, it's one we've not had control over, but our people unfortunately have been subjected to it. And we see it every day in the health and welfare of our people. And certainly, you know, the government of Japan has made their position known, but I think it's also important for those of us in the region who are affected by activities of our metropolitan countries to also be able to speak out, because our people are suffering, and they're going to suffer many years into the future with what has already happened in the past. What we do now moving forward, I mean, do we continue this process? That's something we need to, we need to address. But again, thank you very much for coming in and providing all of your testimony, regardless of what side of this issue you are on. I certainly appreciate your input. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Kanata, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you again to the panel for being present today. We certainly take all your concerns into our proceedings, and we will deliberate from there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, Deputy Counsel General.
Thank you. Can I ask, may I have my colleague Joteno Rio read the executive summary of IAEA comprehensive report?
Yes, he may.
Thank you. Thank you, Sidoz Masu.
Thank you, Senator. I believe you have a copy of the executive summary in front of you, so if you would just join me in reading it. This is from the IAEA, dated in April 2021, the government of Japan releases a basic policy on handling ALPS-treated water at the Tokyo Electric Company Holdings Fukushima Daiichi Nuclear Power Station, a basic policy. This policy resulted from a program of review by relevant Japanese government ministries and depot, and how to manage the accumulated ALPS-treated water stored in the Fukushima Daiichi Nuclear Power Station. Basic policy. stored in the Fukushima Daiichi Nuclear Power Station. Basic policy describes, among other topics, the methods elected by the government of Japan for handling the advanced liquid processing, ALPS-treated water, which was to discharge the treated water into the sea. Following the announcement of this, of this policy, the government of Japan requested that the IAEA conduct a detailed review of the safety-related aspects of ALPS-treated water at, of course, the Fukushima Plant, applying the relevant international safety standards. The IAEA Director General accepted this request and noted that IAEA's commitment to being involved before, during, after the ALPS-treated water discharges. The IAEA is conducting this review, input compliance with its relevant IAEA statutory functions in particular, that is established in Article 3.86 of the IAEA statute, which declares that the agency is authorized to establish or adopt in consultation and where appropriate in collaborate with other competent organs of the United Nations and with specialized agencies concerned, standards of safety for protection of health, minimization of danger of life property, including such standards for labor conditions, and to provide for the application of these standards at the request of the, request of the state to any of that state's activities in the field of atomic energy. In July 2021, IAEA and the government of Japan signed terms of reference for IAEA assistance to Japan to review for safety aspects of ALPS-treated water at TEPO at Fukushima. The IAEA activities in this regard consist of a technical review to assess whether the actions of TEPO and government of Japan to discharge the ALPS-treated water over the coming next decades are consistent with international safety standards. The IAEA is also undertaking all necessary activities for the collaboration of the source and environmental monitoring programs of TEPO and the government of Japan before, during, and after discharge. The IAEA's review is organized into the following three major components to ensure all key safety elements are adequately addressed. One, assessment, protection, and safety. Two, regulatory activities and process. And three, independent sampling, data cooperation, and analysis. To implement the IAEA's review in a transparent and inclusive manner, the IAEA Director General establishes a task force. The task force operates under the authority of the IAEA and is chaired by a senior IAEA official. The task force includes experts from IAEA, secretariat alongside internationally-recognized independent experts with extensive experience for a wide range of technical specialties from Argentina, Australia, Canada, China, France, and the Marshall Islands, the Republic of Korea, the Russian Federation, and the United Kingdom, the United States, and Vietnam, Vietnam. These independent experts provide advice and serve on the task force and their individual professional capacity to help ensure the IAEA's review in comprehensive benefits that best international expertise and includes a diverse range of technical viewpoints. Since September 2021, when the IAEA task force held its first meeting, there has been five review missions, six technical reports, and numerous task meet, task force meetings. A summary of these activities and key milestones are included in Annex 1. Throughout this process, the task force received information from the government of Japan and TEPO, which helps the expert to better understand the technical and regulatory aspects of the planned discharges of ALPS-treated water. The technical reports of the miss, uh, technical reports of the missions include summaries of the IAEA's review and show the progress made by TEPO and the government of Japan. Over the past two years, the task force and the government of Japan have identified and built on observations from the previous missions and on the IAEA is now in a position to draw comprehensive conclusions about the safety of the discharge. Additionally, the review is occurring concurrently with Japan's nuclear regulatory authority, domestic regulatory and approval. Therefore, the insights of the IAEA review were considered in the domestic process in a timely beneficial manner. The comprehensive report includes explanations and insights on a broad range of topics that are important to understanding the overall safety aspects of this process. This represents before stage of the IAEA review as noted by the IAEA Director General. The purpose of the comprehensive report is to present the IAEA's final conclusions and findings of the technical review to assess whether the planned operation to the discharge of the ALPS-treated water into the Pacific Ocean over the coming decades is consistent with relevant, relevant international safety standards. The reviews of individual topics included in the comprehensive report are based on hundreds of pages of technical and regulatory documentations condensed and summarized to make the conclusions from the IAEA's review more accessible and understandable for the general public. A summary of the relevant international safety standards is also included in Annex 2. In order to fully assess, well, whether the ALPS-treated water discharge is conducted in a manner that is consistent with relevant international safety standards, the task force considered the fundamental principles for safety, safety requirements, and the supporting safety guides published by the IAEA. These standard, these standards are standards of safety for the protection of health, minimization of danger to life property. In compliance with the IAEA statutory functions, these international safety standards are developed and co-sponsored in consultation with and where appropriate in collaboration with the competent organs of the United Nations, with specialized agencies. They serve as a global reference to protecting people and the environment and contribute to a harmonized high level of safety worldwide. This report includes the assessment of the application of the fundamental safety principles, the relevant safety requirements, supporting safety guides. It is important to note that in, in the application of the international state, safety standards, these principles and technical considerations must be adapted to international circumstances. Based on its comprehensive assessment, the IAEA has concluded that the approach to the discharge of the ALPS-treated water into the sea and associated activities by TEPO, NRA, and the government of Japan is consistent with relevant international safety standards. The IAEA recognizes that the discharge of the ALPS-treated water has raised societal, political, and environmental concerns associated with radiological aspects. However, the IAEA has concluded based on this comprehensive assessment that the discharge of the ALPS-treated water is currently pla, as currently planned by TEPO will have a negligible radiological impact on people and the environment. Notwithstanding the above conditions, the IAEA notes that once any discharges begin, many of the technical topics reviewed and assessed by the task force will need to be revisited by IAEA at various times to assess the consistency of activities during the operation of the ALPS- treated water discharges with relevant international safety. On May 2023, the IAEA published a report detailing the results of the first interlaboratory comparison conducted by the determination of radionuclides in samples of ALPS-treated water. These findings conducted for the determination, these findings provide confidence that TEPO's capability for undertaking accurate and precise measurements related to the discharge of ALPS-treated water. Furthermore, based on the observation of IAEA, TEPO has demonstrated that it has a sustainable, robust analytical system in place to support the ongoing technical needs of the Fukushima Plant. During the discharge of ALPS-treated water, uh, excuse me, IAEA is committed to engaging with Japan, the discharge of ALPS-treated water not only before, but also during and after the treated water discharge occur. The findings above relate to the activities the task force has performed before the water discharge start. However, the work of the IAEA and the task force will continue for many years. The IAEA will remain on onsite presence at Fukushima throughout this review, and will publish available dialogue by use by the global community, including provisions of real-time and near-real-time monitoring during the Fukushima release. Additional review and monitoring activities are envisaged that will continue and will provide additional transparency and reassurance to the international community by continuously, continuously providing for the application of relevant international safety standards. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Uh, yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you. So, I think there are two contradictory statement, statements in front of us. So, we, we have to seriously think about which ground we should, we should base, base, based on, we should be based on. That's the stake as of now, I think. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. I'm sorry, if I can ask, sorry, Mr. Celestial?
Yes, thank you for allowing me this. I just wanted to share some of my friends' concerns from the Union of Concerned Scientists, and this is what they wrote. Edwin Linman is the Director of the Nuclear Power Safety at the Union of Concerned Scientists in Washington, DC. He says that out of the limited options Japan has for this wastewater, none of them are good, but in my views, I think their current plan unfortunately is probably the least bad of a bunch of bad options, he says. The idea of deliberately discharging hazardous substances into the environment, into the ocean is repugnant. He says it's repugnant, Linman says, but unfortunately, if you do look at it from the technical perspective, it's hard to argue that the impacts of the discharge would be worse than those that are occurring at nuclear plants that are operating worldwide. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Celestial.
Thank you.
Ms. Meneca.
Thank you so much, Senator. Since the executive summary was read into record, I would also like to read into record a report conducted by Greenpeace Germany, which takes a look at the flaws in the tritium risk analysis. TEPCO continues to misrepresent and selectively ignore basic scientific facts of rate on radioactive tritium. In its publications made available in Japanese and English, it explains that tritium mostly exists as hydrogen and water molecules. While, while the committee acknowledges that a portion of tritium also becomes organically bound, TEPCO's information is intended to give the impression that it is not possible for tritium in any form to enter the human body and have radiological effect. In seeking to justify plans for the release of contaminated processed water in September 2019, the Japanese government misleadingly states, "It has not been found that tritium concentrates in humans and other particular living organisms, as tritium water has similar properties as water." The government's Ministry of the Environment omitted any reference to OBT. After intervention by citizens groups, including on the issue of OBT, the Report of the Subcommittee on Handling the ALPS-Treated Water Task and Assessing the Options for Managing the Contaminated Water concealed that tritium releases weak beta rays only and may impact the body through internal exposure. It also acknowledged that of the tritiated water that enters the body, about 5% to 6% is converted into OBT with the value taking into account the effect of conversion. The half-life of OBT in organisms comes in two forms, 40 days and about one year. Considering this is the impact of OBT is two to five times larger compared to tritium water. So in any, in any case, there are many scientists and many groups that are debating and criticizing these studies. The Japanese government and TEPCO are deliberately misrepresenting the hazards from tritium by failing to explain the role of OBT. They are not providing accurate scientific data on the potential impacts of any future releases of contaminated water. Greenpeace has consulted with experts on radiation in the environment and has concluded the problem is that doses of modules and singular, is, is looking at doses of modules in singular discharges, but the multiple discharges occur, these levels will build up gradually. Um, there's also a lot of other criticisms, sorry, that was very heavily technical, but I feel like we have to really pull these things out, because if we're going to hear an executive summary that actually is, is very one-sided and does not tease out these very specific details, we're only seeing part of the picture. I mean, this, a lot of this is, is highly technical stuff that is not accessible to, you know, your regular citizen scientist. And so more definitely, it's, it's showing that there's not enough of an understanding of the impact of this really, the release of this radiated water to the ocean, to the, to the organisms, and of course, to the people who live, fish, and consume all of these, the sea life that comes from the ocean. And I just want to repeat something that I said in my testimony earlier, that the International Atomic Energy Agency, which has endorsed Japan's plans for the discharge, they're not tasked with protecting the global marine environment. That is not their role. So, however, they should not encourage a policy that's going to harm the marine environment. They, the, the thing about the International Atomic Energy Agency is they failed to take a look at how the advanced liquid processing system, the technology that's being used to deal with the water in Fukushima, they have failed to take a look at how, in, in looking at that, they've ignored how the highly radioactive fuel debris that melted down continues to contaminate groundwater every single day. So this groundwater contamination is going to be an ongoing issue. So that, so this is serious. This, this isn't showing a real solution. This is, this is a temporary solution that, one that puts all of the Pacific at great, in great danger. And so, we really appreciate this resolution. It is time that we join several countries now in the international community, including residents of Japan themselves, who criticize this process and are also in protest of the release of this nuclear water, because they are at ground zero, facing the deaths, the illnesses, and the, the environmental destruction, the permanent environmental destruction firsthand. People in the community of Japan are protesting the release of the contaminated water from Fukushima. And so I just felt like it was very important to make some of these points, and I will submit this very technical report about the Fukushima timeline, as well as the, the water release from Greenpeace, both Greenpeace Japan and Greenpeace Germany as part of my testimony. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Meneca, and thank you to all of you that have come in today to testify. Sorry, did, did you want to provide testimony or anybody else? Okay. Yeah, I think it's, you know, it's really clear that, you know, if we go through all this administrative process and we come out saying, okay, it's okay to dump 1.2 million tons of nu, of nuclear water, I think there's a problem with the system. You know, IAEA, the International Atomic Energy Agency, you know, like, like you said, is not, their, their charge or their, their primary role is not protecting the environment. And so something has to give with this process. And, you know, it's not just Japan, but many countries have, you know, utilize atomic power. And so, you know, the impact of that, I mean, you know, using atomic energy, as, you know, the impact of using atomic energy is the, the long-term environmental damage that affects many generations. And so, really, the question here today is not only seeking the stoppage of the discharge, but is also to question the bodies that made this happen and to, you know, to, to aim for something better. Because I can't see us living sustainably in this world if we are swimming in nuclear contaminated water, eating nuclear contaminated fish, for all of us. I mean, this is for humanity. We're talking for humanity's sake. It's not just one country versus another country. It's about... It's about the livelihood of, of our, our humanity and protection of our people and the environment really is intertwined. And so, you know, at the center of all this is whether we can trust the information, and you know, this is a big problem. You know, how can we make decisions if not all the information is there? And even at best, I mean, there were cases where there was misrepresentation. So even though TEPCO has already begun to discharge wastewater into the Pacific, the opportunity to end this discharge before any adverse effects accumulate remains to be seen. To reiterate, the amount of wastewater present in Fukushima is unprecedented, and any determination of its discharge as environmentally safe is substantially premature, considering that disposal period is between 30 to 40 years. Various communities neighboring and within Japan, organizations and experts have voiced their concerns to the Japanese government regarding the potential threats to human health, the environment, people's livelihood resulting from the disposal of wastewater. According to the United Nations Human Rights Office of the High Commissioner, experts have expressed technological and logistical obstacles to the ALPS-TEPCO water processing technology, noting that ALPS has failed to completely remove radioactive concentrations in most of the contaminated water stored in tanks. 2021 communications between the UN independent experts and the Japanese government notes that the ALPS has not been designed to remove radioactive tritium or carbon 14, which would be discharged in their entirety into the Pacific, and that the processed water to the discharged still exceeds regulatory limits for radioactive tritium and therefore will be diluted with non-contaminated water and discharged over at least 30 years. Further communication, research, and community concerns have collectively reinforced the detrimental consequences of wastewater disposal. These consequences are not restricted to the disposal's timeframe of 30 to 40 years, but have been determined by scientists to remain present for over 100 years and generations to come. As stewards and inhabitants of the Pacific, it is critical that our voice be heard on this issue, and that is what we hope to do with this hearing. Many of our communities, those neighboring and within Japan, have strongly expressed their concerns over safety, full health, and environmental protection that equally concern us as a neighboring Pacific community. Historically and presently, we have experienced the adverse effects of nuclear contamination upon our bodies, our lands, our precious waters, of which our livelihoods depends on. For us who live and call Guam home, we must take the initiative in these issues concerning our safety. In collectively determining what is safe for our island community and intrinsically considering the responsible remedies that should be taken, we must urge the government of Japan to consider alternative solutions to the disposal of radioactive wastewater. Experts have expressed that such alternative solution exists, and it is imperative that we urge the Japanese government to explore these critical remedies. The permissible radiation exposure dose set by the Japanese government concerning Fukushima, which unequally and unjustly permits radiation exposure determined for adult nuclear workers to conform to children and infants, the concerns presented by numerous local, regional, international communities, experts, organizations regarding the efficacy of the ALPS-water technology system, and transparency and thoroughness of TEPCO and the Japanese government's determination studies, as well as the nature of radioactive contaminants being discharged into the Pacific Ocean reflect the critical need for alternative solutions. Discrepancies between scientific experts, of which reflect determination of safety among TEPCO, the Japanese government, and other associated parties that oppose the concerned findings of UN experts, non-governmental organizations such as Greenpeace and other local, regional, international bodies and experts, all the more demonstrate why such disposal is extremely precarious among a lack of scientific consensus, that such disposal is safe in addition to considering the positionality of all involved entities that have demonstrated their findings. The Pacific is not a theater for leveraging economic strength or for posturing for war war. It is certainly not a ground for disposal of contaminated water by the industrial world. This is our home, and we must take the lead in protecting it. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 PM Friday, September 8th, 2023. Please address all testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chair President of the Committee on Environment, Revenue, and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research, and Planning. It can be dropped off at the mailboxes here at the Guam Congress Building or emailed to office@senatorparas.org. The committee will adjourn. The time is now 11:04 AM. Thank you to everybody.